At 11:01, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Denise, since you were the first to line up, will you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under us, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you guys are stuck with me again today. Sorry about that. Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Frankie Pretzel, absent today. Sherry Newquest?
Here.
Herb Brooks?
Yes.
Dawn Bullock? Raquel Mitchell? Judy O'Gala? And Denise Winfrey.
Okay, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of July 3, 2025? Winfrey? Second O'Gala, can I get a roll call, please?
Sherry Newquest?
Yes.
Herbert Brooks?
Yes.
Dawn Bullock?
Yes.
Judy O'Gala?
Yes.
And Denise Winfrey. Passes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, new business. Number one, ZC-25-016, which is the MAP Amendment from R5 to R6, and a special use permit for a multi-use building in Joliet Township. They have requested that this be postponed to October. So can I get a motion? Motion, second O'Gala?
Previous.
Previous Brooks?
Second.
Second Bullock, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and skip for a minute to number three, This was the special use permit for the commercial solar facility out on Balt's Road in Troy Township. They want to postpone this until November. So can I get a motion?
Motion, O'Gala?
Previous?
Back it.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Jumping back to number two, the Second Story Foundation Special Use Permit for a similar or compatible use to a rural retreat in Crete Township, 2400 Bemis Road, Crete, Illinois, County Board District 3. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I know we've got... Land use, do you guys wanna give us an overview of this?
Certainly. So I have on the screen just some slides that we showed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting back on August 19. But this zoning case, ZC25068, is requesting a special use permit for a similar or compatible use to a rural retreat to allow the Second Story Ranch, a recovery-centered residential and community healing retreat. The property is 68 acres. It is zoned A1, and it was formerly the Double Dakota Ranch, which was a horse cart racing training facility. The stable can hold about 85 horses, and there are several outbuildings that were constructed on site to support that training facility's stable use, which is permitted in the A1 district. You can see on the zoning, the area is largely agricultural with a few residential subdivisions interspersed, the closest being the Ridgefield subdivision, which is that northeast corner that's zoned R3. The applicant is proposing to do, or to continue, the horse ranch operations. And in doing so, they are looking to have the program participants doing all the work on site. So with the working ranch, there's always work to be done. Horse ranch operations are permitted by right in the A1 district. But with the program participants, they are going to be staying overnight on site, and they would be participating in the recovery program for their addictions. Ideally, the recovery work program would last about six to 18 months, if successful, but it is largely dependent upon the individual's progress within the program itself. The ranch will have a lodge that's about 12,000 square feet, which would be the farmhouse community center where the 15 program participants would live and take part in their ongoing therapy, community programming activities. And then they also would be working the site, the stables, the horse training, things of that nature. Staff will oversee the care of the program participants. Also, will be residing on site with two additional single-family residences, and that would be providing 24/7 supervision to the participants. The applicant is also planning on partnering with the Health Department to provide healthcare coverage to the program participants. As the property is that working horse ranch, there will also be educational programming available to the public, as well as the continued horse boarding and training facilities for the public and the existing stables. Rural retreats are permitted by right in the A1 district, and I can read the definition. Typically, rural retreats per our zoning ordinance is an establishment that is part of a working farm that provides temporary overnight accommodations for individuals or groups engaged in supervised training or personal improvement activities. Typically, these would be corporate retreat facilities, educational retreat facilities, and working farm learning centers. Restaurants would be seen as an accessory use. In terms of the recovery side of this program, our zoning ordinance defines recovery sobriety homes as halfway houses, which is defined as a dwelling that provides temporary living arrangements for persons who are receiving supervision, rehabilitation, and counseling to help them re-enter society and live independently. Examples include, but are not limited to, programs that help residents recuperate from the effects of drug or alcohol addiction, pre-release, work release, probationary, and other programs that serve as an alternative to incarceration, and programs for persons with family or school adjustment problems that require specialized care and attention. And this halfway house is not a permitted use in the A1 district, nor is it allowed as a special use. So the applicant is seeking to argue that combined with the horse ranch activities, what they are proposing is similar or compatible to a rural retreat. Staff affirm the special use criteria, stating the overall use of the property would remain agricultural. It would continue to be the stable with equine training, as well as the need for the residences to support the workers on site. And the additional structures that would be required as part of this development would be constructed, meeting all county codes and ordinances. This case was heard on August 19 at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Crete Township provided objection comments citing the concerns towards the participants negatively impacting the quality of life to residents in the surrounding area. The proposed use is not compatible with agritourism uses. And at the public hearing, there were many residents that came out, many from Ridgefield, objecting to the request citing similar quality-of-life concerns, safety increase in noise, impact on property taxes, environmental impacts of the continuing agricultural use of the facility. There were seven supporters that attended and spoke citing their need for continued recovery care beyond the 28-day program and the extended sobriety recovery home process and programs. The Planning and Zoning Committee recommended unanimous approval with a vote of six to zero for the request with the seven conditions that staff recommended in their staff report. So just some photos, looking at the site. There is a gate for the main driveway that does get locked, and there is a key access. But the site plan, you can see, we have the main stable in the center. The gray buildings are the existing buildings, and then the red is what's being proposed, all of which would meet A1 setbacks. And then these are the seven conditions that were approved by the Planning and Zoning as part of the approval of the special use. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions from anybody? I mean, I actually have a comment. I... It was interesting. I read this case before I looked at any of the objections, and I was not at the Planning and Zoning meeting. And I think it's a really excellent project. It looks like a great program. My only concern is it's not agritourism. And I am... We have several agritourism businesses in my district, but I... And I'm very concerned that if we approve this as agritourism, it's opening the door for all kinds of, you know, different business ventures that could be called agritourism. I don't find the plan objectionable. I think it's a great site for something like this. But I... If they were looking for a zoning change that would allow them to do this, I would probably be in favor of it, even though I know the residents would not be happy. I just don't... I'm very hesitant to approve this as agritourism, and I'm probably going to be voting no on it. Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Judy? Go ahead.
So I have a comment. So before the redistricting, I represented this district for 10 years. I... As a representative, you run all around everywhere, and you know the areas that you're in. I think that we need to support this project because of the fact that... What a great opportunity it is for people who were incarcerated. They've gone to an actual halfway house, and now they're ready to come back out on the street. But as we know, a lot of times, people are not yet ready themselves. They don't have a support system. They may have burned it by their behaviors. This provides an area for people to come and have that support for six to eight months and learn how to get along, learn how to do chores on the farm, work together as a team. Once they get through that process, they also then will have training as to getting back in, getting a job in the community, learning how to take care of their finances. If we don't have options for people who could use this additional support, then what happens? They probably fall right back in the pile that they were with. They go with their friends who accept them, who are doing the same stuff they were doing, which caused them to get in trouble in the first place because they have burnt their bridges with their family and close friends. But the guys and girls they did stuff with, they're still there. So I think it's an excellent thing. While the zoning is different, it is 60... 60 acres, you said?
Yes, it's 68 acres.
68. I didn't hear the eight. Okay, 68 acres. And I've spent a lot of time over the course of several years now speaking with Jim over what his thoughts are, what his plan is, what he's done in the past. I just think it's an excellent opportunity. I think it'd be the first time that we'd have something like this here in Will County that is unique to many others. We have other halfway houses, and the people are confined. They're locked in this home. They don't get out. They don't even walk on the street. This allows these individuals to have the opportunity to be outside every day, to work with animals. And when you work with an animal, you build compassion for others. So I would encourage a yes vote. Thank you.
And you know, I 100% agree with Judy, except that it's not agritourism. So anyways, okay, Denise and then Herb?
Excuse me, and I like the project myself. But I would like for us to protect our agritourism designation. So the other option would be for them to be designated as what?
In terms of the recovery program activities, we would classify it as a halfway house. It would have to be rezoned to, I believe, a residential zoning district and get a special use for the halfway house. In doing so, we don't allow split zoning of a single parcel, so they would have to go through some type of subdivision process to divide off the area that would be the recovery halfway house use on the property if they were to keep this same property.
Thank you. Herb, go ahead.
I agree 100% with you, Sherry. And I agree 100% with you, Judy. I think in our district, Denise and I, District 6, we have several facilities like this in our district. And I think at the risk of those that need this service would have to drive from that community all the way to Joliet or other areas that provide it. I cannot sit here and tell you how important it is to help people in needs like that. I did a recovery program at my church for 25 years that ended when COVID began, and I got a chance to see the need. And I do feel that this is a program that is needed. I do understand, though, with the vice chair remarks, if we change this, Land use, it will open up the doors to others. I'm not a gambler, but I'd be willing to take that risk. I think we ought to support it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I understand the applicants here. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Would you wanna come up and take some questions? Thank you. Oh, how do I turn that mic?
Thank you.
Nobody wants to hear me talk any more than they have to.
Microphone challenged. I apologize.
No problem. Nate Washburn with KGG LLC here in 111 North Ottawa. I represent Mr. O'Connor and the Second Story Foundation with respect to this application. If I may, before I entertain some questions, if I could respond to some of the dialogue that's already been happening up here. First and foremost, we understand and appreciate all the concerns that have been raised, and we understand that this is a unique opportunity for Will County in a unique property. And I 100% understand the concern over agritourism. But what we're applying for isn't agritourism. It's for a use that is similar and compatible to agritourism. So why is this similar and compatible to agritourism? It is open to the public. It will allow people to come and experience these horses. Yes, there is the core component of this being a recovery home. And I wanna be very clear, this is not a halfway house. So classifying us as one, you know, a halfway house is where you go after your initial recovery period. This is essentially an extended stay-living facility for these people to continue their journey to recovery when they have timed out of their ability to stay at halfway houses and other-like facilities. So that's why our average stay is six to 18 months, because this is for all those people that don't have those home and family support systems to take them in. This gives them that home, that family, that support system. So by approving this as a special use, it's giving you a couple of things that the other options that have been discussed wouldn't. You can't condition straight zoning. You can condition a special use permit. You can't condition a variance. You can condition this special use permit. So you can actually exercise more control while keeping this agriculturally zoned and not converting it to residential. Because again, we've talked many times, as I've brought through other projects over the years, how parts of Will County, particularly the Crete and surrounding area, very much value keeping things agriculturally zoned and not moving them to residential lots or to industrial lots or to commercial lots. So from our perspective in looking through the options we were provided, this was the best way to accomplish my client's wishes of building this facility, which is unique and would be the first of its kind in Will County, and protecting the community to the best of our abilities from a zoning standpoint. So somebody else can't just come in and be like, "Oh, it's zoned residential. I'm gonna put up 50 homes here," which I think would actually make those residents less enthused even than the, I know, concerns they have about my client's project. So while I understand the concerns about protecting agritourism, this isn't agritourism. This is similar and compatible to it because it combines the recovery aspects with that open public access to, you know, come on site. And something that was discussed at length in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was a similar facility that my client used to operate up in Palos, where they have a lot of property, and there happens to be a... I believe it's a preschool or a kindergarten on site that these people are the janitors. They're cooking the food. They're interacting with these kids. So these are not dangerous criminals. These are heavily vetted individuals that are just made a couple of mistakes and are on the right path to recovery, and this gives them that space to grow and complete that transformation for themselves. And we truly believe that the zoning we are requesting is the least impactful on the residents, the most beneficial to the county in the long term. And while it... Again, I admit, you know, it's... We're talking very precise language here in what is agritourism and what is similar and compatible to agritourism. But by approving this, you're not setting any sort of precedent. Every one of these zoning cases, on a special use, is a case-by-case basis, evaluated on its own merits. So approving this does not open the floodgates for anybody to put anything into agritourism. It will always come back to you guys to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis. And I think the case here warrants the support and the approval. And I'm happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Hi. Okay, so what is the distance between this property and the Green Garden subdivision? What's... How far are we talking?
Green Garden subdivision? Ridge... Are we talking about Ridgefield? Okay, so...
Well, it says here, Green Garden. Ridgefield.
I would say... So Ridgefield, if... Margie, are you able to pull the map back up? The distance in technical terms is about zero because the Ridgefield subdivision is kitty corner at the northeast corner of the property. So there is one lot in that subdivision that corners our property. However, to get from that subdivision without trespassing onto our... Through our property from the north, you have to actually go out, down, and around. So the practical distance is substantial. The technical distance is admittedly zero because that one lot does corner-touch us. But they would have to trespass onto our property, or we would have to trespass through some woods. But the actual facility, the main buildings, and I don't know if it was in staff's report, our concept plan, but everything is either at the large stable building or, you know, within very close proximity. So the northeast corner of this site plan is what is cornering that subdivision. But the vast majority of the homes are hundreds, if not thousands, of feet away from anybody. You know, it's a 68-acre property, and we're fairly well into the property.
Okay. All right, second question. And this, I don't know, we'll see who gets to answer this one. So what steps or processes have I gone through before I get to Second Story?
I will do my best to answer that question, but I can actually, if you prefer, have my client come down and answer that because it is a very rigorous process, and I don't wanna leave a step out, but...
And I... I wanna know what your steps are, but I also wanna know, as an addict, how... What, like, was I court ordered to go here, and I did that, and then I was able to do this, and then I did that, and then I come to second steps? That's kinda...
Right. My name's Jim O'Connor. I'm the Certified Alcohol Drug Counselor and the Executive Director of the Second Story. And I... Thanks for your time. So a couple of things I'd like to make clear. Number one, we don't actually take people directly from incarceration, like, straight from there. I've never run a program where we've done that. So to start out, if you are an alcoholic or addict, to get to our ranch program, you know, the... It may start with a family member reaching out and saying, "How do I do it?" That would be just first contact. But more traditionally, you would have to be in a 28-day inpatient rehabilitation program to start. So you're already in that. Or you've asked me how to get in, and I tell you, you need to go to one first. And from there, their counselor or case manager in that 28-day inpatient program will reach out and say, "Listen, my client's still interested," from there, to come to your program. So I'll set up a phone screen. And during that phone screen, I'm asking a lot of questions, and I'm almost at trying to talk the person out of it, letting them know what the, you know, what to expect at the program. It's not easy. It's a great program, and it's safe, and it's really wonderful, but it's not easy. And so at the same time, I will get that person's name, social security number, birthday, and I will ask them what they're... If they have a criminal background. And I will tell them. If they leave anything out that I find, they're automatically disqualified. So I need to tell... They need to tell me everything that I could find. I go out and do a deep background check. FBI numbers, everything I can find. And from there, we recognize that justice involvement often goes hand-in-hand with severe alcoholism and addiction and the lifestyle of being out on the streets and just what you go through. So I am going through that background check, screening out any issues of sexual crimes, crimes against children, violent crimes, anything that has to do with guns or weapons. I'm also looking at the totality of that. We call it a jacket or rap sheet, right? And I'm looking at the totality of it to try to tell me a picture, give me a picture as to whether or not this individual has a life of crime and that it's part of, like, how they seem to save themselves, or are the charges that they picked up ancillary to their drug and alcohol use? And a good example was somebody that I thought might have been a good case. I looked up his background, and it turned out he had been charged with grand theft auto in, like, nine states. Now, did he hurt anybody? Was it any of the things that are disqualifying out of the gate? No. But I looked, and I said, "This guy has gotten by through, you know, many states continually doing this. We're taking a pass." So that's the screening process. Then I come back and say, "Now you have to come for an in-person interview." And in that in-person interview, we are now screening and interviewing to see the level of willingness of the member to change. You know, the last two questions we asked, "Are you willing to do anything?" and "Are you teachable?" And if there's a high level of willingness to join our program, then that person may get it. So that's how the screening process goes. One thing I wanna kinda say, and I've gone over this a lot, and you guys are maybe the experts, but as far as similar and compatible goes... And we worked with Land use, they're amazing. We have a 68-acre property, right? It's Ag 1. And under the agritourism, we could build, as they suggested, six units, six ADUs out there. And so the ADUs could be up to, you know, three bedrooms. So we could have 18, 20 people out there for horseback riding and organic gardening, you know, Airbnb-style things. And we could book that 365 nights a year for five years. And we could bring on people who may be doing drugs, maybe smoking pot, maybe drinking, and they're ADUs. We could have them out there just under the agritourism retreat as it is. And so we're arguing that it's similar or compatible in that the point of an agriculture, a rural retreat, is to come out and spend time on that property in that rural area that is healing and open, including animals and gardens, to learn about what it's like out there, to spend time out there. But essentially, to come from where you were, spend two nights, four nights, a week, two weeks with us, and then go back to where you were feeling better than when you came. That's the point. And so we're not arguing that we are agritourism. Now, we will have... We're not gonna be running circuses or weekly things, but over the course of a year, we 100% will have people from the community to our community center space there for food pantries, for farm-to-table meals, for seminars on mental health, addiction. What are the challenges for rural communities in these areas? So we'll host the community in that way. Are we agritourism? Not the way you're thinking of it, no. But we're similar and compatible to it. And if I understand things correctly, if we were asking to have 18 people booked on our property 365 nights a year for five years, that'd be an approved use. And so we're not different from that in how we're keeping people there.
Okay, one more. Is it a come and stay, and you're on the property? That's where you are, you're... Or is it a, "I'm staying on that property, but I have the ability to go out in the community and do whatever I want and then come back"?
Whatever you want is not something that we ever talk about with alcoholics. That is not a phrase we use. There's a program development, right? And so when you come into the program, now, for the first three months, you won't have a cell phone. We're gonna give you all your numbers. You can make calls from the landline. You'll be able to have your friends and family over for dinner and lunch. And if you're not expected to work that day, you can have guests over. And in the first month, you'd probably be restricted on site. We will go out into the community in groups to go to 12-step meetings, to go to baseball games, to go fishing. But in the first month, you won't be able to go out on your own. The second thing that we have is we don't allow anyone... There's two phases of the program, phase one and phase two. In phase one, while you're working, while your job is on the farm, we don't really have anybody that is allowed to have automobiles. So we are taking people in and out of the community to doctor's appointments, to therapy appointments, to dentist appointments. We make sure they get all their healthcare taken care of, legal appointments if they have it. And they'll go... We'll go in pairs and teams of people. As the men move through the program and get healthier, heal, develop good work routines, good recovery routines with those 12-step groups, with their sponsors, you know, we will let men go out with their sponsors, go out on their own to different recovery groups after they've established themselves in that way. After they've established themselves in that way, and usually that's the four to seven month mark, everybody heals at different rates, but in my experience, there's a natural growth arc. And about four to seven months, the men in the program will say, I think I'm ready to work, like I'm really ready to get back out there. And we'll say, okay, let's, let's talk about that. And at that point, we'll help them get reliable transportation and they will go out and get jobs, paid jobs out in the community. And from that point, we're working with them on financial management and planning, on the work-life stressors that come with living outside the ranch and working with people who might not be so compassionate to your needs. So they come back and they, they live, they do all this rent-free, by the way. Um, we're not charging them anything for any of this. So at that point, they can come and go, but they're expected to keep their meeting routine. They're expected to be at dinner if they're not working. They're expected to check in and we know where they are. We know what their jobs are. We don't let them take overnight shifts, 11 to three. It's a, you know, only day jobs. Uh, we don't let them work in restaurants. We don't, you know, we encourage them to get good jobs that will support the transition they're going to make into independent leases when we help them move on.
Okay, I lied, one more because you said men. Is this male population only or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's like the worst idea.
Um, I have a, are you done, Don? Sorry. I have a question. Where do you get your funding from?
So, um, the Second Story Foundation, um, up until we came to Will County was, is completely private. And Will County has been amazing with some, uh, mental health and opioid grants. It's huge. So our funding is primarily private. We are, I just got back from Washington DC, um, with the heads of HHS and they are looking at funding us, um, as a demonstration project for something to replicate nationwide. But we have a strong, so our funding for a capital program is likely to come from government for building. And then after that, it will be, the ongoing operations will be mostly privately funded.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for our legal. Can you explain the concept of, um, similar but not identical to? I'm a little fuzzy on that. Oh, I think they can, they're on.
Is it on?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So the best of my knowledge, similar compatible would be something that's, um, you know, I'll be blunt, I think you hit it right on the head, agritourism, uh, you know, you're looking at something that's similar and compatible to agritourism. It's not going to be, uh, agritourism in a sense that you're going to be doing exactly the same thing, but the concept is still there. So when, I think this, from what I'm hearing, this is actually a combination of two things. And so I kind of agree with, um, both the chairwoman here and Mr. Brooks. I think it's definitely a worthy cause and something that's definitely needed within the community. But I also agree with Miss Newquist here in regards to saying that I'm concerned about opening a door for having anybody and anyone file an application to simply attach something else that may be similar and compatible to a use that is not. And that's the concern that from a legal perspective that I have, is that you're allowing to have, um, a similar and compatible use attach something else to it and just slide it in that way. That's a concern I do have. And, you know, if allowing, uh, going down that slippery slope, if we allow it here, who's to say that somebody else doesn't do the same thing and attach something that might be similar and compatible to something that is definitely not?
Thank you.
Can I speak to that?
Sir, go right ahead.
Um, so I think one of the other things for tourism was rural retreat, right? And so we think we're very close to that. But as I'm hearing it, and I, and I heard this at the planning commission, um, and maybe this is just personal, the slippery slope, like as if you don't have control over what happens next, like it's so fear-based. This is so fear-based, things that aren't happening, right? I am so scared of what's going to happen if this guy is next, so I'm so scared of what's going to happen. And nothing will ever get done. Nothing will ever get done without some level of courage.
Go ahead.
Sir, I think it was discussed earlier. I think you, uh, Snuquist had addressed this and I, I'm going to disagree with that because there is a solution. You can do a, we don't allow split zoning on a single piece of property. I get that. But you can also rezone that property to allow it. So you could do a subdivision of the property, have one parcel, after you've done a subdivision, remain whatever you want. And the parcel that you're doing is agritourism, if you wanted to make that zoning for that. So then now it's allowed as a right. Um, so I beg to disagree. I think there is a solution. I don't think we're pursuing that. That's my humble opinion.
Well, and to address the concern about a slippery, slippery slope, I can think of one specific parcel that I believe is outside of Peatone that's zoned A1 Ag and is effectively a warehouse on an A1 parcel that was proved as similar and compatible to what I likened it to, I have long since forgotten, but it's approved and it went through this committee, the full county board, and there was no concern about saying that that warehousing operation, operating as similar and compatible, uh, in an A1 district was opening up the floodgates to having a million warehouses sitting in A1 Ag. I would say the same thing here, that this is a unique request for a unique project on a relatively unique property in rural Crete that isn't going to be replicatable every instance. And again, you know the standard as well as I do, special uses are single-use, single one-off reviews. There is no precedent set by you approving this. You, Jim's twin brother could come in next week and make the same pitch and you could tell that person, no, and there would be no legal recourse to force the county's hand to approve that one just because you approved Jim's project today. So I, again, I don't mean in any regard to minimize the concerns that are being raised, but I do agree a little bit with my client that fear of the future should not halt the approval of a project today. And specifically, do you, and I ask this question knowing based on the comments I heard a few weeks ago, if we went in to subdivide this and we went in to zone this residential, and again, even a halfway house, we would have to apply for a similar and compatible use to a halfway house because we are not one. So there is not a zoning designation anywhere in the code that perfectly fits this use. And it best fits because of the farm nature, because of the combination of factors in A1 under this special use for similar and compatible, because this is very much like a rural retreat which falls under agritourism. And, and so I, again, I understand the concerns, but the uniqueness and the combination of factors here, I think all mitigate in favor, just as PZC reviewed this at their public hearing and gave us a unanimous vote of, uh, recommendation of approval. I think the combination and the uniqueness of this mitigates in favor of approval and it doesn't bind your hands for any future requests and does not open the floodgates the way that, and again, I understand the fear, but I do not think that fear is founded here.
I just want to comment, Judy, and then you can go ahead. My concern isn't fear-based, it's practical-based. Having been on this committee for quite some time now, I can tell you numerous instances where we've approved a special use, a one-off special use, and then other times we've had someone else apply, we, we have one pending now for that same special use. And the argument is, well, you gave that guy that special use, so why can't I have the special use? So that's where I'm coming from, not fear of the project. I mean, I'm looking at all the agritourism that we have in that area or that we're hoping to have, and I'm trying to, um, you know, prevent that whole, well, he got his, why can't I get mine thing happening down the road? So just want to clarify that. Judy, go ahead.
Sure. I'd like to have Jim explain what type of work, when somebody comes here as a first time, what will their day-to-day experience be? You talked about not being able to leave and things like that, but what will they be expected to do while they're there? What type of work will they do?
Yeah, that's a great question. Agricultural work, in a nutshell. So our property has, uh, as Land Use mentioned, 84 stalls, um, but right now we have about 50 horses boarded. So the men will work in horse care, land management, um, farming, and, uh, as I said, hospitality, hosting other people, making meals, um, preparing for events to bring people out to that farm, right? Where we can showcase what we do out there and showcase the lifestyle. We have got plans for a, for our men to work a farm-to pantry, organic garden. We've talked with Catherine Picor about that. We were talking to, uh, Will County Community Development, so that our men will literally be farming organic foods for people to come and both eat farm-to-table meals and go home with the produce. So, I mean, these are just the day-to-day things that you do on an agricultural property. We also very much want to stay zoned Ag One. That gives us far greater, so again, we're not a halfway house. That's a designated 3.1 treatment facility on the continuum of care for substance use disorder. We are not that. So our Ag One property and maintaining that gives us far greater freedom and latitude to work with the USDA and upcoming funding, um, for the Rural Health Transformation Act. So it really puts us right in a position to be able to showcase that rural life and to show the benefits that rural communities can bring to health, um, to mental health, to reducing anxiety, to being outside, um, to working with purpose, to working with nature, to working with animals. Um, I think those daily uses are all promoting agriculture, both on-site and bringing people in to showcase that.
Thank you. Yeah, I do. So I just wanted to say one close, a couple of closing items. So while, um, I agree, it's not a halfway house because of what they're doing is, is the work that would be done after you've left a halfway house. And what they're learning is going to be agricultural. The property is agricultural, they're maintaining agricultural, they have horses, they're going to have hay. As Jim said, they're speaking about having a, an organic farm, uh, garden, which I think is fabulous. So they will be doing that. And I live on a farm and I know when I go out every day, if I can be stressed, we know, we know what this board brings us, right? Um, when I go home, I can go out and I could just stand on my property. I can go and feed my chickens and things like that, and that brings my stress down. So this would be exposing these individuals who would be staying there for a short time, like a rural retreat for six to eight months, extended stay, and they would be able to have the time to decompress. They'll have the time to learn how to do things, possibly cook if they've never cooked. Who knows what, you know, the guys don't cook. Some men do. One of my sons does, the other doesn't. But, so you would have that opportunity to have that exposure. This is unique and I've never heard, I've been on the board a long time, not as long as my co-partners down there on the other end, um, but I've never seen anything like this come before us. I would love for us to have this opportunity to be unique and start something different here in Will County that isn't anywhere else, that provides people with the opportunity to succeed beyond what we've done today. Because I, what I see in life is we've got a pattern of you do this, you do this, you do this, then you're off on your own. And that really doesn't work for most people. Most people have an issue and they need that extra support. This gives the extra support, gives them the opportunity to bring their family here and show, hey, I'm really trying to change. I know I was a fool, I did stupid things, I'm doing my best to change, that's why I'm here today. So it's going to create a better future, not only for that individual, but also for their families and then friends, because it would spread. And if we were having, if we have them go about and do a subdivision and all, all that, we can't keep the conditions on the property like we do with this, which gives us that, um, opportunity, gives land use, if there's an issue, to go out and inspect. You know, if you do residential, you, you're not going to go on somebody's property and things like that. I think it's an opportunity we have, it's unique. I don't think we're going to see a bunch of other people coming and saying, hey, I want to do this because they're doing it. If there is another group that want to do it for women, I'm going to be in for that, right?
I'll help, I will help.
So I think that would be something, I think it's unique. We allow, we allow, the state of Illinois allows, solar facilities to be built on agricultural land. We're not growing anything. I doubt that that property is 30, 40 years before it ever produces a crop again. We allow that. We do have agritourism, while this isn't tourism in a way, it's going to be. It's going to be an opportunity for people who work in this field to come and see how this is working. Maybe they change the way they do things and help, um, people in their setting because they've learned something in this setting. So I hope you guys will support it. I think it's a fabulous project. It's unique and I think it's something we could be proud of.
Okay.
Herb, go ahead.
Um, again, I sit on the Board of Directors, stepping stone Treatment Center, Joliet, and I understand the need. So for the attorneys in the room, Nate and Mr. Guzman, we have three levels of checks and balances. If you open up the floodgates by passing it, Sheri, and others will come thereafter, we have the planning commission on Tuesday night, we have land use committee here, and trust me, we'll take all day. I hope you all have lunch. And thirdly, it goes on to the land use committee. So I think, gentlemen, everyone that come thereafter with a project similar to this still got to go through those three levels of checks and balances. And just because we allow Jim and Nate, I hope Jim don't have a twin brother because he looks better. I think everyone that comes thereafter will go through the same thing that you did and we will not give them a free pass just because we gave you one. Thank you, madam. Can we vote?
Well, I have one more question for staff. Sorry, just to follow up, question for staff. And it really pains me to be in opposition to this. It's, it's just not me. But my question is, forget about the recovery aspect of this for a minute. Let's just say that this is, what if this were like a fancy artist retreat where burned-out artists could go, you know, meditate and contemplate life and work on their art for eight, for six to 18 months? Because that's what you're saying, your stay kind of expands. So how would we zone this if that were the case? Would we allow this under agritourism or would we have to zone it under some kind of commercial or residential?
I think something like that would probably be argued very similarly to the request before you. They would be arguing similar or compatible to a rural retreat, um, partially because the extended stay would be longer than what we would consider temporary. Temporary in terms of zoning is usually 180 days or six months. But rural events, what we usually see for like corporate retreats, things like that, it might be, you know, a couple of days, it might be a weekend, it might be a couple weeks. But anything longer than that, you start getting outside of what we would probably look at is your typical rural retreat that would fit under that use classification.
So basically, over 180 days in our world is not considered temporary?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Are you guys ready to vote? Nobody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, can we do a roll call?
Sure. Denise Winfrey? Judy O'Gala?
Yes.
Dawn Bullock?
Yes.
Herbert Brooks?
Yeah.
And Sheri Newquist.
A reluctant no.
Order one, pass.
All right, thank you. Okay, number four. ZC dash 25 dash 065, MAP amendment from E1 to A1 in Will Township, 31414, South Egyptian Trail, Peatone, Illinois, County Board District Two. And Steph, can you guys fill us in on this since I'm a little confused?
Yes, I can quickly give a brief overview. So this takes place in Will Township. As mentioned previously, this property underwent a rezoning request in 2023 through zoning case 22084 to reasonable property from A1 to E1. And that was, that was done to basically all property to undergo a minor subdivision to create five lots. The applicant decided not to, to move forward with that request and is now attempting rezoning the property back to A1. I believe his idea is to create a 10-acre parcel and then settle it to interested party. And I think that just allows the new proprietor to have, you know, farm animals on the property, big accessory area and stuff like that. But I mentioned for the new proprietors, would be able, would be required to obtain a building permit to build any new structures, including the house that he wants to build. So at the planning zoning commission, there were no concerns, citizens or comments from any agencies. Steph, they recommend approval of the MAP amendments and the commission voted five to zero, thereby recommending approval of the MAP amendment. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. And I didn't ask for a motion in a second before.
Motion, O'Gala.
Thank you. Okay, discussion, Judy?
Thank you. So this, so the applicant did go forward and changed the parcel from A1 to a subdivision to break it down?
Correct.
Into three different parcels that were E1?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So is this taking, so one parcel was sold, I think, and there's a home or something being built?
Yes.
And that left two E1s? And that left two E1s that were going to form into this A1? Is that what's happening?
Correct. I can share kind of the PowerPoint that's presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I think you might give a better overview of what we're talking about. So this is, this is the zoning map of the property. And basically, the portion outlined in blue is the portion that's going to be rezoned back to A1, and the portion outlined in red is the rest of the parcel. So we're only rezoning 10 acres of the parcel back to A1.
But so what's in red? What is that?
So in red.
Will it be combined back into one parcel?
So the portion of red is the entire property. So this portion right now, the blue and the red is one property. The property owner wants to divide the blue area, which is owned E1 currently, change it back to A1, and then sell off that portion to an interested party to build a house or whatever he may want to do.
So that E1, although while it was, it was split from the A1 parcel.
Correct.
Right? So it's not part of the same, it's in the same area, but the owners are still the same, but it's a split parcel, its own PIN number, right?
So currently, it is the same PIN number.
The same PIN?
So when they underwent the rezoning in 2023, the idea was to create two 5-acre parcels in that blue area.
Correct.
But they never went through that rezoning, so it still remained the same PIN number as was in 2023.
They did go through that. That's what, that's what I.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting confused. I thought.
I thought that they went through to make three 5-acre parcels.
Yeah, that was the idea. So they went to, they at least did the zoning portion of it, but they didn't follow through with actually creating the two parcels, the three parcels.
So I'm confused. We approved that. We approved for them to go ahead and have these three parcels. Can you please explain? Because I am, that's what I'm confused about. Because Sheri and I, well, we're here.
I can shed some light on the rezoning. So initially, when they came forward, I think they wanted to rezone 15 acres to E1 to create the three 5-acre parcels. It does not appear that they, they created the one at the northeast corner of Corning and Egyptian Trail, but they did not create the other two parcels out of that rezoning. So with that, out of the 15, you still have 10 acres that are zoned E1. And the request before you, my understanding is they just want to rezone that 10 acres to A1. So it has not been divided. It would have reflected having two pins by this point from mapping and plating. It sounds like their intent is to keep it as a 10-acre parcel.
Okay, so then what I'm under, I'm totally in support of going back to A1. But so, so the question is, they came before us, we gave them approval to take this land and split it into three fives. And then it left us, left our board and went off to wherever. Then after that point, then what happened?
They had a change of heart. So the 5-acre that is at the corner was sold and has a house in process, but the remaining 10 acres, which is that blue box, is what's the request before you because they don't want to create two 5 acres out of that. They want to, they have, it sounds like an interested buyer for the 10 acres. So they want to go back to A1, sell the 10 acres as 10 acre A1 and call it a day.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. Like, I just was clear, I was confused. So when somebody gets that split, they don't always have to go to that next step. They may or they may not.
That is correct. So when the map amendment changes, they could stay E1 as a 10 acre. They would be restricted to all permitted uses in the E1 district, the setbacks, the accessory building area limitations. And it sounds like in this instance, they don't want that if they meet A1 standards.
Okay, thank you.
So the red area is going to stay E2? No, that's already A1. And it's just the blue area that got split off as the E2 that is reverting back to the A1. Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote? Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Denise Winfrey. Judy O'Gala. Don Bullock. Herbert Brooks. And Sheri Newquist.
Yes.
Passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, number five. ZC-25-067, special use permit for light equipment sales and rentals in Wheatland Township at 10051 Fode Street, Unit C, Plainfield, Illinois, County Board District Number 2. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or questions? Okay, can I get a previous? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to other business. We have our solar status report. Did anybody have any questions about that? Otherwise, you guys can just look at that. Number two, land resource management plan update. Any updates for us?
Yes, we are currently still in negotiations. We're trying to narrow down the scope of work.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay, thank you. Number three, temporary use permit project discussion.
All right, thank you, members of the land use committee. As you are aware, the committee asked the department to look into the temporary use permits and which ones were causing trouble and come up with some suggestions on how that could be changed. At the July meeting, we presented some information on the history of the temporary use permits, which ones are causing the department the most trouble as far as complaints and complaints that we've received from neighbors and property owners. And at that time, we had identified that those permits that cause the most trouble are the ones that are a temporary use permit that is not an authorized temporary use permit by the zoning code. And when that's in the, when that's the case, then those requests have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. So we had identified that. It is, I'd say, in the grand scheme of things, it is a small number of ones that have caused an issue, and mainly one specific site over in Crete at the old horse track. So that's, the one had caused the most trouble. But the question is, well, what can we do to, what are some possible ideas to change the code to address, you know, that issue? And I came up with two ideas there. It's in the memo on the second page. And it's, would be two things. Just eliminate those types of requests, meaning that if it's not in the zoning code, then you can't have it. And just, there would be no option to have something like truck parking at a horse racing facility. You know, it's just not available. So nobody would be able to apply for that. If you still like the idea of people having the ability to apply for a temporary use for a use that is not expressly authorized by the code, it seemed that there was a concern that the Planning and Zoning Commission was the hearing body for that, and you were looking for more control, that that type of use could go to this committee or the county board or this committee, then the county board. So that, that would be the alternative. So those are the two ideas that I came up with. I could not find any example in our surrounding counties where those types of requests go to the county board, but if that's what this board would like to do, and you'd like us to prepare text to change the code, have that as the procedure as outlined in the zoning ordinance, we could do that. So the two things I have up here are just not allow these types of requests, period. So nobody could go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and request those. And then also make the county board in charge of hearing that type of request, which either that could end at the land use committee or could go to the PCC, land use and county board, like other zoning cases. I just want to point out that there are some requests that go to the PCC that are not expressly authorized, like there's one that we've had going on for, I think, in his 12th or 13th year now in Crete at the Mark Tracy's Landscaping Business, or I think that's who's Mark Tracy. And that's been going on, and the only reason it has to go to PCC is he has axe throwing, which is not identified in the zoning code. But every year, he goes to the PCC and he requests, and he's approved, and we've had zero trouble with that request. So if, by eliminating going to the PCC as an option for some requests that aren't identified, you could be eliminating some people that, you know, we've had no trouble with.
So let me ask you this. I, I really appreciate the time that you put into this. So let's use the axe throwing example. Does he axe, allow people to axe throw all year long? Or is it just for like an event?
Nope, it's just for his fall festival. It's just one of the things that can be done there during the fall festival dates. As Margie pointed out earlier, temporary uses are temporary, and that use operates into September till the beginning of November.
Now, to me, that's appropriate for a temporary use permit. It's temporary. What I don't find appropriate is like at Bel Moral, they went up for two years. Every six months, they renewed it for a total of two years. That's not temporary. I mean, so in my mind, while I do like number two better than number one, because there's always exceptions, you know? There's always instances where, like a good example is right now, they're staging, you know, the equipment for the exchange street improvements at Bel Moral. I mean, there's, there's always things that people might want to do that we never even thought of, but we're all okay with, but it's the time component. I mean, in my mind, you know, anything over maybe a month, I don't know, pick an arbitrary, even over six months, it's not temporary at that point. And I, and I, I think that would probably satisfy my, you know, issues. Because put it this way, let's say that first six-month, you know, issuance for the car parking at Bel Moral or the truck parking, maybe it went fine with no problems. But I mean, even so, that's a business that they're running. It's not a temporary use. So that's kind of where I'm looking to go with this, if that makes sense. I don't know how we address that. I mean, but I definitely think if it's not something specifically allowed in the zoning ordinance, then maybe we might want to consider it, you know? But I don't know, given your axe throwing example, I don't know if that fixes it either.
So can I ask a question? Because I agree, Sheri and I represented that area, and we, it was ridiculous what was going on there. Went from cars to explorers, what BMW, no, Volkswagens, something then to explorers, then semis and trailers. It was just never-ending. The impact was huge, coming and going was constant. There was nowhere that was temporary use. For something like the axe throwing, it is temporary use. It's for a fest. Or I could see like, let's say they did it all summer long for three months, it would be seasonal. Is there anything we could do like that to allow those to go to PCC because they're a fest or it's a seasonal type event? But this, this was, this is, this is, this is, that was never-ending, never-ending. We never stopped getting calls from everybody out there. It was a totally inappropriate, especially temporary use because there was nothing temporary about it. So can we do anything that would say, is this going to be for a fest? And is it just a seasonal thing? Whether we're going to do sledding for three months, whatever, or axe throwing during summertime? But it's, a lot of people like that. I don't know if I could get that XFR, but you know, so is there something we could put it to say temporary use for this requires these type of things versus this, then the others come to us?
So I just had an idea pop in my head, based on what you said, and I haven't heard what Dawn has to say yet, but I have, I have an idea, and I want to answer your question. So what if we changed the language to, or I drafted language that said that it sounds like you might be okay if the PCC reviewed a request that was temporary not to exceed a certain period? So this would be talking about a use that isn't identified, which you could then say that that's it. You can only have that request once in a calendar year, and you cannot request it again. Because that's how we define much of the, many of the temporary uses, that you could only have like 20 events in a calendar year. You know, you could do something like that, or you could say if you want to have it longer than that period, then the next request would have to go to the land use committee or county board so that then you could hear it to decide if it was appropriate. So those are two different things we could do, and you could, I could prepare that language. You could take a look at that and see if that might address your concerns.
I, I like that. Dawn, go ahead.
I'm not opposed. Question, how much is a special, a temporary use permit?
It's $200 per, per request. And so not per event, but per request. So like the, I was using the fall fest example, it goes for like six weeks. It's just $200 for that request, not for each event weekend they have it.
So each time I extend it, am I paying $200 again?
You would pay $200.
I am, so even now, like if I ask for an extension, you're going to charge me another $200, and I'm going to keep going?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think our big issue is that we have no definition of temporary. We have no, I see 179 days in here for some of these things, for construction, a couple other, couple other, what's this one? Temporary shelter. So I guess if we were to define, well, see, but this also says, it's, I think it's not, it's how many times can you renew it? That's the issue. It's not, it has nothing to do with like technically the length of stay. It's how many times we let you just go, yeah, let's, let's roll that over again. Let's just roll that over again. So there's no urgency for, for anyone to fix the issue that is requiring a temporary use. So I feel like it, it has to be a limit to the number of times you can tick, 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 so.
Or maybe if you, right, like I like the idea, if you extend it, then you do have to come before. I mean, because, okay, think of a, what if there's some kind of disaster and someone's house, like there's a tornado, my house is destroyed by a tornado, and I'm living in a trailer on my property? It might not be, it might not be finished. The new house might not be finished in six months. So I might, I might need an extension. But that's way different than running a business where you're just getting, so maybe we make some kind of distinction based on businesses versus residential also. Because I can completely see where you might need that temporary use permit for a year, maybe even more, you know, in a residential situation. But I don't, to me, in a business situation, that's just a way to get around, you know, having to comply, having to get a business license, having to get inspected, you know, all that kind of stuff. So if that, I know, we're giving you a whole bunch of info there, Brian. I hope it's helpful.
Well, that's exactly what we're looking for. And the temporary use section is already set up in a way kind of like that. There are some provisions in the code already for people that may have experienced loss of, you know, because of a fire or natural disaster or some other thing where they could live in another structure while their home is being reconstructed, or maybe they're going to live in their existing home while they tear down, where they build a new home and then they tear down the old home. So that happens too. And that can go longer per the code until, you know, occupancy is granted, and then they have to remove the other structure. And then we have another example where we have construction site for like batch plans. So if, you know, if you're working on a highway project that might take a year, two years, then those can go like the length of the construction project. So there are already different time periods in there for different uses. So if you, I mean, I think I've heard a few things here, and I could prepare some language that may address these, and then you could take a look at that and see if I did all right.
That sounds good.
Great, thank you, Judy. Did you?
No, but I mean, what he said, what Dawn and you said, I think that's what we're looking for to control. Will that ever happen again? Maybe not, but I don't ever want it to happen again. Ever.
All right, Dawn, I shudder to think.
All right, I'll work on that, and we'll have something for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, these next ones are all extensions of the special use, special use permit for solar facilities for the most part. And we did have a question. I can't remember, Dawn, if it was you who asked me, why the extensions, you know? So maybe, staff, if you just want to give us a really brief explanation of how these things go so long and why the extensions are needed.
Yeah, so like you mentioned, the vast majority, I think only one is not related to a commercial solar facility out of the seven that are before you today. But with regarding solar or any special use that you approve, they have two years to legally establish the use. So what legal established usually means is they have to get a building permit issued to start making the improvements needed for that use. With the commercial solar facilities, that is, you know, preparing the site for
With the commercial solar facilities, that is, you know, preparing the site for the construction, putting in, you know, the access drive, putting in the native pollinators, making sure all building side is the electrical components, the pilings, the structures themselves. So they need basically all that permitted for us to consider it legally established. What we've seen initially since the state authorized the solar facilities is the process was slow. So we had a handful of projects that went through the special use process. We had a number that came forward that had to re-request the process because they went through the extensions that the county board approved and they still needed more time. With the requests before you, these all were approved as part of 2023. They were working through, many of them have building permits on file with us. They are working through the reviews. They just have some delays with responding and actually getting the permits issued. But they are requesting their extensions to ensure that their permits can continue to be working under review with us and get issued. So they could potentially have extensions up to four times each, 180 days if approved. And that would give them about an additional two-year window for them to continue working on those permits to be established. All of these, it's the first extension request, except for 013, which is the Prawley Farms Partnership on Kennedy Road in Peatone. And this is their second extension request. With regards to that, when the applicant did provide a narrative explaining some of the recent developments with federal funding drying up, that they required a little bit more time trying to figure out their project funding for actually building it. But they also have submitted a permit. There's not a lot yet submitted in their permit file, but they are working through the necessary items to get that submitted soon. With that, once their permits are issued, we would consider, you know, their special use established, we would conduct a final special, special use inspection when we usually go out to do our final landscaping inspection. A lot of these, there are a few of them have, you know, landscape requirements or at least making sure that the native pollinators are doing their job. Many of these projects also already established their variances. So they have established the native pollinators on site, they just seeded it. Once they got the word from the farmer that they could do so and they just verified with us that they established.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Dawn, you have a question?
Quick, quick clarifier. So you said these are all first, just a technical?
Yes.
Number four and number five, don't say first. So like there was a, a commitment to put first and second on these other ones, but they weren't on, just double checking?
Yes, they should be first extensions for the SEXT25011 and 25012, our first extensions.
All right, okay. All right, let's get through these. Okay, number four, SEXT-25-011, extension of special use permit for commercial solar energy facility, ZC-23-096, Peatone Township, part of 8219 West Kennedy Road, Peatone, Illinois, County Board, District Two. Motion second? Second Winfrey?
Just do a regular roll call to make sure we're.
Sure, let's do a roll call. Yep.
Denise Winfrey, Judy O'Gala, Dawn Bullock, Herbert Brooks, and Sherri Newquist.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Number five, SEXT-25-012, extension for a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility, ZC-23-086, Moni Township, vacant property on South Will Center Road, Moni, Illinois, County Board, District Number Three. Motion Winfrey?
Second.
Second Brooks?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Oh, sure, Judy, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure where else I would talk during.
No, this discussion, that's fine.
Okay, so this is one thing, I don't know where that other one is on Kennedy. I guess I haven't paid as much attention. I live on Will Center, so it's easy, I drive past this all the time. So this is the only thing, and I don't expect any resolution here, but I want us to all hear what I have to say as well as staff. So a lot of times when they're in the stage of, they get their permit the first time, we say, yeah, that's fine, you can put this there. And then they move forward. So sometimes it's a leased parcel, sometimes they buy the parcel. And there can be a difference, but there may not. So sometimes they will continue to farm on that parcel until they've got everything in place, the agreements with common, everything. They continue to farm until the time that they have everything in place and therefore they harvest the crop and they, and move forward with the other part of the project. In some instances, they may purchase it maybe and still do that. But sometimes they don't and they don't keep an agreement with a farmer who had been farming it before. And then this plot, this acreage of land sits there vacant. And when you hear farmland, they say it's vacant. Well, my farmland's not vacant, it's agricultural, productive agricultural farmland. This is actually vacant because it's a piece of property, it's zone day one, intended to be a commercial solar facility, but nothing happens. Nothing happens, nothing's planted, there's no cover crop or anything. It just turns into a whole field of weeds. I've pointed a couple out, Marguerite's done a great job at contacting the people, they've gone out sprayed and, and one, they've cut it. So that's really good. So I want us to see what can we do that after they get this, that we make sure that they are doing something with that land so they have all their ducks in a row to move that at next step. It could be as minimal as a cover crop. You could hire a local farmer to put in a cover crop. To do a cover crop is so much less expensive than a regular crop. The seed is not the same cost, you don't have to put on fertilizer and things like that. So this is an issue that I see that we have and these properties on Will Center, there was actually two for the same company. And one, whoever was doing it actually planted corn, so that's good, but the other one is a field of weeds. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that is the situation. I don't know how we address it. I'd like to find a way for us to address it to make sure that they do it. And maybe it's as simple as, and maybe not, you know, they go to PCC and PCC gives them their variances, right? And they go from five mowings to zero because they're eventually going to have sheep running around out there eating everything. But what happens before they get to that point? Before they've put the solar panels in and they've got the thing and it's ready to go and they could bring any sheep? What is happening? How are they maintaining it? So I'm looking for that. So I wanted you guys to hear this. And then staff, if you can give us some ideas, how we can, what, what we can do for the future.
Something we could look at adding to the conditions.
Something like that, right. So that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a previous roll? And a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, SEXT-25-013, second extension for a special use permit for a solar farm, ZC-22-066, Peatone Township, vacant property on West Kennedy Road, Peatone, Illinois, County Board, District Two. Motion O'Gala? Second Winfrey?
Previous.
Previous. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, SEXT-25-014, first extension of a commercial solar energy facility with three conditions, Joliet Township, vacant property at Northwest Corner of Cherry Hill Road and West Schweitzer Road, Joliet, Illinois, County Board, District Six. Winfrey moved? Second Brooks?
Previous O'Gala.
Previous.
Second bullet.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, SEXT-25-015, first extension of special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility with four conditions, in Joliet Township, vacant property on the southwest, I don't know, SSWX of Cherry Hill Road and US 52, Joliet, Illinois, County Board, District Six. Move Winfrey?
Second O'Gala.
Second O'Gala? Previous?
Previous.
Second.
Second Bullock? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine, SEXT-25-016, first extension of a special use permit for construction sales and services with four conditions, Peatone Township, property at 11233 West Kennedy Road, Peatone, Illinois. Second?
Come on, guys, I thought we had a pattern.
Come on, second Brooks? Previous? All right, second Winfrey? All in favor? Aye. You guys are messing me up here by changing the order. Number 10, SEXT-25-017, first extension of a special use permit for a commercial solar energy facility with three conditions, Crete Township, vacant property on Torrance Avenue, Crete, Illinois, County Board, District Three.
Move.
All right, move O'Gala, second Brooks? Previous Winfrey?
Second.
Second Bullock? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And number 11, Sub-25-MIN003, Wandersee subdivision, a minor subdivision, James and Julie Wandersee, owner of record, Manhattan Township, Tanka Key Street, Manhattan, Illinois, County Board, District Number Two. Yes.
All right, so we had placed that on the agenda, hoping the applicant would have gathered all the signatures in time. We were just trying to help them out so they could get it going quicker. They weren't able to get all the signatures in time for this meeting, so it'll move to the October meeting.
Okay, can I make a?
What's the proper?
Yeah, I think we need to postpone to October, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, Herb, were you seconding it over there?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, previous? Winfrey? Second previous? Bullock?
Whatever you need me for.
You need, we need, we need you to second the previous.
Second the previous.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have no other reports, communications or correspondence, no need for an executive session. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 2nd, 2025, and I will take a motion for adjournment. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.